Voice of trustee meeting to order. Entertaining motion for adoption of agenda and approve or consent agenda items.
No move.
I would just like to make sure we point out that in approving it, that 6H will not be on the board agenda because it was, did not come out of committee.
Thank you.
Item 6H is not part of approving the agenda because it did not come out of the committee of the whole meeting.
We refer it back to committee.
Yeah.
All right. Kate and Kevin, how do you vote?
Wait, I've got to join. I'm sorry, I'm coming.
Kate, Kevin?
I was...
We're voting on item 1B, adoption of agenda consent items. How do you vote?
Okay, we're voting on those. I vote yea.
Okay. All right, I believe we're voting on Reverend Collins.
Yeah, I'm trying to get back out of the committee.
Oh, how do you vote? How do you vote Reverend Collins?
I would yes, but I can't. I would yes, but I can't get out of it.
Mr. Hollenshed is not on the phone. Did you vote Reverend Collins? All right, that motion passes. Approval of minutes.
No move.
Second.
Ms. Darby, how do you vote?
I vote yea.
Thank you. She's not on. Okay, that motion passes 5-1. The only board remarks that I have, I just want to remind board members of the superintendent evaluation that was supposed to be held this month at this meeting that we talked about. And being that the superintendent is not present, we will have that evaluation done on next month upon her return.
So this will be the part without any student achievement because we just found out we won't have any of that.
Yeah, so remember, we're doing it in two parts.
Right, so this will, okay, good.
Right, so this should just be part one, but we will do it next month upon her return. Okay? Entertaining motion to go into executive session.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, a lot of confusion has come up, and frankly, I'm confused. Did the board decide to add two kindergarten classes at Boust? Was that part of something that the board did? Was that done because staff has that authority to do? I'm just... How, I don't, I reviewed the minutes, I don't see any indication that that was discussed. So, how did that happen?
No, it was done by the superintendent.
Yeah, the superintendent.
So, we add, we add classes at all kinds of schools without requesting board permission. So, if there's, if there's room and we have the ability to expand, just like pre-K and Head Start, if there's room and we can expand, we do.
And so, if they wanted to expand seats at another magnet school, they could do so, but they're, we're choosing not to? You're choosing not to with staff?
There's, there's no space at the other magnet schools to expand. So, the other two magnet schools that are full, which are academic magnet school.
No, those are the other two tested in magnet schools. There are multitudes of magnet schools with waiting list. All the Montessori's have waiting list.
But there's no room to expand.
Yes.
Right.
There's no room to expand.
So then, I guess where I just want to make sure we get very clear, because this is a conversation that needs to be very transparent, it is, and I support 100% that, but we had in our last board meeting, a large presentation that said the board needed to be involved in deciding how to grow magnet schools. So, it is, it seems like we're stepping in and out of the decision-making process, and I just want to make sure we're very clear on how and why the board would do that. We're being asked to vet decisions on magnet expansion or decreasing. At the same time, there are certain magnet decisions that are justifiably so made by staff, and I want to get real comfortable with why we're being brought into this at this time, you know, as opposed to other times when decisions have been made without the board being included in the conversation or prior, so...
So, it wasn't the last meeting, it may have been the meeting before that, that the superintendent did share those details with us?
Right, that she made that decision.
Right, that she made that decision.
And then it was at the last meeting that the staff said, "We want the board to start making these decisions about magnet schools that we're going to propose and bring to you in the October board meeting." That was, I mean, literally the motion is bring those recommendations to the board at the October board meeting. So, I just want to be real careful about when the board comes in and out of that decision-making process. I mean, we literally voted to have them bring us proposals for us to decide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Darby.
You're right, the superintendent did let us know, or actually gave us some input about adding the two classes at Boust. The recommendation, or the recommendation to come back in October, my understanding was that us looking at doing kind of an overhaul of what we are offering impartial magnet and magnet programs. So, I think it's a little bit different than what, maybe what Cindy's perception is as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, entertaining motion to go into executive session?
No move.
All right, thank you. We're all going to executive session. We're going to reconvene in open session. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. At this time, we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, a entertaining motion for executive session items.
We'd approve of item 4A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is that on?
I got it. Now I'm on. I was confused. Thank you. Are we ready to vote?
Okay, yes, please. Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
I'm sorry, say again?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, Kate Darby and Kevin Hollenshed is on the phone. Okay, that motion passes. Item 4B?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
So, I'm going to make a motion based on the categories that we have openings in. So, for medical, I would like to nominate number four. We had only one clergy apply, that was number nine. I would like to nominate that for the clergy position. For the two parents, I would like to nominate number seven and number six. For the teacher, I'd like to nominate number 12. And for the student, I would like to nominate the only student that applied.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's a problem moving second. For medical, number four, clergy only, parent number seven and number six, teacher...
Number 12.
Number 12, and student only that applied.
Yes, sir, that's my motion.
Kate, how do you vote?
I vote yea.
Kevin?
No move. Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, that motion passes. Item 4C?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to uphold the decision of the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, probably move in second. Please cast your vote. How do you vote, Mr. Hollenshed?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item 4D?
Mr. Chair, before, I would ask that before the board make a decision on the request before us, that we move to have staff request a return packet from the District 2 constituent board.
Second.
Okay, probably move in second. Please cast your vote. How do you vote, Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Hollenshed? Just hit the red button and operate in. Want to change vote?
Yeah, he's already hit it. Which, which item? Which was D?
D.
He's already, he needs to change his vote on D to what? Would you like your vote to this?
Aye. If you can change this to aye, or do we need to redo it?
No, he can state it to the board secretary.
Okay. All right, that motion passes. Okay, I just want to note that Reverend Collins did change his electronic vote from a no to a yes. Okay? Next item?
I'd like to make a motion, Reverend Mack.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to move that we overturn the constituent board's recommendation on student number 34, and that we uphold the constituent board recommendations on student number 35, 36, and 37.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, overturn number 34, uphold number 35, 36, and 37. Please cast your vote. Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
That's number Chris.
Yep, that's number 30, that's number 34, Reverend Collins.
That's 34, that's what we're approving?
Yes.
Uh huh, yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Green? Okay, a motion passes. Item 4F?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the request to remain, as well as deny any request for waived tuition.
Second.
Moving second. If there are any questions, if they're being done, please cast your vote. Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. At this time, we have item 5A, public comments. Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, sir. We have eight speakers this evening. I'd like to remind everybody, keep your comments to two minutes. We will have a timer that will monitor that for you. First speaker up will be Gina Voorhees. If you'd come to the podium, please. And behind that, be prepared, Elaine Washington.
Hi, I'm Gina Voorhees. I just want to make sure, I signed up for non-agenda items, so I'm here to talk about Boust. Should my, should I talk now or later?
Okay, that would be non-agenda?
I mean, do we have total?
Yeah.
We've got nine total.
All right, let's, let me just take a look at this right quick. Okay, you can go ahead and proceed. We'll do it.
Okay, well, I am here to talk about the proposed changes at Boust. I attended the last meeting up at the School of the Arts. I want to reiterate my concerns about the recent decisions that have already been made and the proposed changes at Boust. These changes, as we've learned today, were made by the superintendent behind closed doors without public input. These are very significant changes. You're basically doubling the size of the school, which in essence means that we've grown out of the building without any concerns from parents or administrators or teachers being aired. I have emailed all of you on the board at least twice, and I would strongly urge the board not to rush into any decisions. Again, I want clear thought being put into decisions that are being made. I'm hearing that there may be a vote that comes up in the August-September timeline. Well, as Darren Goss, who was head of the MCAG for Downtown Recommended, there needs to be a much larger discussion with a much larger group over a longer period of time. As per my email, and I know a lot of other Boust parents have also emailed you, we will call for a public forum to have an open discussion on the issues. Let's all sit down. Let's talk about what makes Boust great. Let's talk to the teachers. I haven't heard anybody at all talk to the teachers about what makes Boust great. What is it about Boust? Is it the small size of the school? It is such an integral part to the success. The teachers are very satisfied there. We have very low teacher turnover. Teachers get along really well with the students, and they get to know their needs, what it needs, what the students need to succeed, because it's such a small school setting. So, let's talk about diversity. Let's talk about how we can increase the diversity at Boust. And the diversity that comes along right now, I would bet, would come from districts other than downtown Charleston.
If you could conclude your remarks, please.
So, again, I would like to encourage a public forum, and to this date, I have not received a reply from any of you about having a public forum. Let's open up this discussion to people to air everyone's concerns, to hear all sides of the story, rather than making decisions by one person behind a closed door.
Thank you, Ms. Voorhees.
Thank you.
Elaine Washington is next, followed by Cynthia Washington.
Hi, I'm Elaine Washington. This is my first time speaking in front of a board of people. But I'm in half of CPA, Charleston Progressive Academy, and I'd like to speak on the closing. We was, in three years, they talking about closing the school down. History repeat itself. It can be good or bad. And the good part of history repeating itself is love, compassion, and caring, and understanding, and truth, and trust. The bad part of history can be conniving, greed, selfish, and inconsiderate. Barnes Wilson, C.A. Brown, Lincoln High School, Wilmont Frazier, Frazier High School was a stat, oh, Lord, I'm nervous. Have the same thing in common. Each, all of these schools have been closed down by Charleston Progressive. Char, I'm sorry, I'm so confused. I'm nervous. I never spoke. But the school have been closed down, and we would like to keep CPAs open because it's a lighthouse school. It was established by two females African-American women, Ms. Harriet Wilder, also Ms. Montella Robinson, who's deceased. We was told weeks ago, a month ago, that the school would be shut down by this mission critical committee. They proposed to shut the school down based on what? We don't have an understanding why. We would like to know why. Before the decision be made on this decision will be made, please listen to the stockholders, I'm sorry, the stakeholders, to hear what we have to say. It was not presented to the principal of the school, the teachers. It was not presented to them, not even the teachers, not even the parents. I'm nervous. Can I say again? I'm sorry, I have never spoke before.
Go ahead, continue, but if you could bring your remarks to a close, thank you.
Okay, please save our school. CPA have love and compassion, and we built on that. We love our children too. We want the best for our children too. We establish leadership through our kids. And we care.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Thank you.
Cynthia Washington will then be followed by Naquan Kelly.
Good afternoon, members of the CCC School Board. I'm here today to voice my concern about the proposed closing of Charleston Progressive Academy. I have been charged with the task of taking care of my grandson, who is enrolled at CPA and entering the third grade. He became, he began CPA the summer prior to being accepted into the four-year-old program. I was elated when I entered the school and saw the diverse cultural and demographical differences of the students there. I entered the school and saw those diversities. I was told at the school, about the school from a parent who had a son there. When the academic school year started, I was very disappointed that the original appearance of the school was changed. It was those children had vanished. However, it worked out fine. My grandson thrived, and his life was richly enhanced by his days at CPA. He appreciates learning, and his vocabulary and willingness to engage in conversations with any man, woman, boy, or girl is exciting to behold. He is a thinker, not only about himself, but others as well. I credit his school for these accomplishments. They have kept me informed about his needs and continue to challenge every aspect of his life. Listening to the video of the, the school board meeting where the critical mission team proposed closing the school, I was very disheartened that my grandson's principal, the school, and that they were not aware of the meeting. And upon questioning, I found out the meetings that they were supposed to attend had been canceled prior to the meeting started. I have a few questions I would like you to consider. First, why CPA? To be remodeled to meet the physical needs of middle schoolers. Number two, why does it seem that schools that have been started by Afro-Americans such as Barnes Wilson, CPA Brown, and Wilmont Frazier's are among the first to be put on the chopping block? Now, you're talking about CPA, who has, the founder, who is also still alive. Why can't schools that are presently closed be used, and the funds to renovate them serve your needs?
If you could bring your remarks to a close.
Last one, what will happen to the students that will be enrolled at CPA? Are they going to have to be bused to other locations? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Naquan Kelly is next, followed by Harriet Wilder.
Good evening. First off, I want to state that I'm a concerned and dedicated parent of two children, one of which has gone to middle school at Charleston Progressive, and one that is currently going to kindergarten at Charleston Progressive, so I have a long history at Charleston Progressive. As a countywide magnet and the only Stephen Covey leadership school in Charleston County, the school has been maintaining its school report cut of average consistently throughout the years. Last year was the first year that CPA failed to achieve average. However, for any proposal serious as closing this school, or any school, one data point does not appear to be very transparent. The question that I ask why, that asks is why a 2017 third grade reading SC Ready score was used, and not the fourth or fifth grade? Your decision? For choosing CPA based on data and performance? If the answer is yes, my next question is, would the Michigan Critical Commission Committee come to this conclusion to recommend that Charleston Progressive be closed? This is the second time that Charleston Progressive is in this position to be closed. And replacing it with the Montessori students. The justification by Mr. Goss stated that's what the Jane Simmons parents want, tells CPA parents, tells us that our, that our thoughts and feelings do not matter. Trying to justify this proposal with moving Simmons Pinkney and another African-American school in the Courtney Building does not and will not make the African-American community satisfied.
If you could bring your remarks to a close.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we question that the performance, if the performance is the issue, or what we want for our children, does it really make a difference? Does it, does it matter to these persons that are making this proposal for school closure of Charleston Progressive? Again, this is the only leadership school in this county. That should make a difference. We, we're trying to mold leaders and not losers, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Harriet Wilder? And that should be followed by Sally Ballard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Harriet White Wilder, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Charleston Progressive School. Charleston Progressive was established by two retired Charleston County administrators. Therefore, that in itself set precedence over the fact that there are others that are making statements that have no idea of what's going on as far as education, education is concerned, the process is not concerned. As someone mentioned earlier, Mrs. Martell Robinson is deceased. I'm the person that's still here, alive, willing, and ready to fight for Charleston Progressive. In 1995, 1995, the school board gave Charleston Progression permission to open, and we've been functioning since then. Every now and then, we'd hit a bump in the road that always came from proposals to close the school, going all the way back to 2007. The Chronicle featured in...
Go ahead.
All right, there was an article in the Chronicle that stated Charleston Progressive School opened enrollment successfully despite the lack of funding. Okay, that was 2007. 2008, The Post and Coria shows a plan for District 20 closing and restructuring. The article in The Post and Coria states that the district is facing what is described as a financial crisis. The district was then asked to come up with steps to devise a plan for restructuring and closing schools.
Holler, if you could wrap it up.
Okay, Charleston Progressive was on that list too. Now here it is, 2019, the game is still the same. The only difference is the players are different. Question still remains, why? Question still remains, why? Why Charleston Progressive? Is it the location? Is it the student body? What? Definitely, it couldn't be because you're trying to save money, because the way schools are being flipped, flipped, flipped. The only thing that's going to come out of this is Charleston Progressive being closed. So, how do you save, how are you saving the money?
Thank you, Ms. Wilder.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sally Ballard is next, followed by Mr. Arthur Lawrence.
Reverend Mack and members of the school board, I'm Sally Ballard, and I was at Beust Academy for Advanced Studies for 22 years. During that time, I was the assistant principal and then went on to become the principal. For decades, for three decades, actually, Beust Academy has been one of the strongest schools in the state of South Carolina, and the faculty members, the students, and the parents have worked very hard to make it number one. The curriculum has always been rigorous. Students attend foreign language classes five days a week. There is an entrance test that must be taken and requirements. There's a continuation policy so that students are kept where they need to be in order for the curriculum to work for them. In 2007, Beust was made an international baccalaureate school, both for the elementary and for the middle grades, and this further enhanced our international approach to learning. Today, you can find Beust alumni all over the world, either studying or working. But now, we have changes afoot. First, class size was increased. Secondly, test scores have been lowered for entrance, and now two kindergarten classes are to be added, which will eventually lead to the school being doubled in size. There's talk of merging with Meminger, and that would split the grades between the two campuses. That goes completely contrary to what the whole intention of, one of the intentions of the school was, which was to have a kindergarten through eighth grade program. And how will all of this work out for Meminger? They have their own three distinct programs. The student-teacher ratio over there is 11 to 1. Ours is much higher. And how will their community needs be met? Your ideas at the moment are not going to improve the education on Charleston's peninsula, and it appears at the moment that you are trying to bring down one of your best schools rather than trying to find ways to improve the others. You should be cheering us on, not undermining the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Mr. Lawrence, followed by Devon Wade.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. I have almost over 60 years working in government, working local here in Charleston, and it's always a fight. It's 10 years to the day that what you're doing came before this board 10 years ago. Ray Charles can look in the package on your desk and see what's going on. We came to you before with Charleston Progressive and Beust. We're not going to fight each other. We need to work together like we did 10 years ago to turn this thing around. Now, I'm not a gambling man, but I will bet that the principal of Charleston Progressive weren't contacted, the parents weren't contacted, no one contacted or talked to those individuals. But now, I always tell people, if you're in charge of the data, you can make the data read whatever you want it to read, but you should not touch Charleston Progressive. And I want to thank that board member on the 24th who stood up for Charleston Progressive. They have worked, you abused them in the past, and now you want to continue to abuse them. You need to stop it, and the number is three years for those schools that you have on their agenda to chop down because of one person sitting up high in that seat up there. One person went to the Chronicle, put that irate piece in the Chronicle, tried to make the black community, the black teachers, and the black principals look bad, and the students. You're siphoning off the money from the different school and Title I? And that individual, y'all living in a glass house and throwing barons. No one said about the $8 million lost, the different things that you're going through right now, which you did wrong. No one went to the paper and continued to put that in the paper. But the individual who did that, we're going to hold all those politicians that put this, trying to put this package together for this community, on election day, everyone in here should vote those individuals out. And we can't allow people that, who's running for mayor, running for office, use these kids in Charleston to further their agenda. You need to do better than that. You have Beust, you have Meeting Street Academy, you got a blueprint. Just make sure that every child is educated across the board like those schools you're trying to do.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Devon Wade, and then followed by Eric Jackson, who will be our last speaker.
Hi. I'm here to also speak about the proposed merger between Beust and Meminger. For me and for many of the parents that I know, the biggest issue right now is just clarity. No one understands what that means or what the vote actually is. So I'm here to ask you, what exactly is that proposal? What exactly are you voting on, and if you can provide some clarification? Does the proposal entail a full merger of Beust and Meminger student bodies? Would the merger take place immediately or over time? Would Beust and Meminger buildings be used to house an elementary school and a middle school, or would the buildings be used in some other fashion? When will a formal written description of the proposal be released to the community? Will it be released before the board votes on the proposal? Does the proposal entail a merger of space only so that the merged schools would house two separate academies, or is the intention to fully combine the student bodies? Is there a plan to provide additional support and resources to the current students in Meminger to raise their test scores, or is the plan, as has been suggested, just to average the test scores together? There's no clarification on that. With the current administrators of each school, where would they go? Where would the current faculty and staff go? What is the plan to deal with redundancies of administration of faculty and staff? Where do they go? If Beust Magnet status is eliminated, will it happen immediately or over time? Would there be a policy to grandfather in current students or not? What information, research, or immediate need caused the board to make the rest decision, or actually not the board, I guess, the superintendent, to expand the kindergarten class? Was there thought or consideration given to the space constraints of future expansion? Is there an intention to continue admitting four classes per year, or, as has been suggested by some, was this a one-time experiment? The Clemson Report and the Mission Critical Presentations did not address how the idea of a merger would be constructed or how it would play out. What research have you done since those reports came out to inform the vote that's upcoming? When can the community expect to see written documentation of these plans? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Mr. Jackson?
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Jackson. I'm the SIC chairman for Burke High School, and I'm going to be speaking in that regard. I came last month addressing issues about learning with the SIC and what partnerships with the PTSA and other community organizations can mean for CCSD. But a recent op-ed in the local newspaper seems to undermine everything that we're working towards. The students at Burke High School deserve better representation. I think these kids work hard. Some of them coming to the ninth grade behind the eighth ball, sometimes two, three grades level behind. And as a SIC, a school administration, and a principal, it's totally disrespectful for somebody that's representing these kids to get in there and talk negative about their graduation. That is totally disrespectful. And as a board, Mr. Chairman, and other board members, you should hold him accountable. As a matter of fact, everybody talking about bold change, I'm going to ask for a bold change, and I asking him to resign immediately, because that is disrespectful. He never talked about the great accomplishments of the students. We got a student going, two students going to the Citadel, one on the Full Ride Football Scholarship. We got students graduating with college classes already. We got a kid that's graduating with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. And to get in the newspaper and only talk about negative cherry pick data is an assault to the rest of the kids in D20, and y'all need to stand up to him and hold him accountable. That's not right. I can come up here time and time again. I ain't going nowhere. I know when you meet, and I gonna come back every time, because that's disrespectful. We work in this community. When them kids walk across that stage, we are trying to get them to the next level just like you. Hold him accountable. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comments.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all of your public comments tonight. We're a Policy and Personnel Committee, item 6A, or is there a desire to...
I have a motion.
All right.
I move to approve items A through G, but individually. If I can get a second. Items A through G, Policy and Personnel.
So, I would say let's approve them as a voice vote, since we're all in agreement that we want to approve them and have the chair work with the board secretary to make sure the votes are recorded properly for the minutes. Would you agree to that friendly amendment?
Yep.
I second that motion. So we'll vote on them all as one, but then we will make sure that we give Julie time to record them properly.
Well, she can put them in the screen, doesn't matter, but in other words, we agree to all of the policies except H.
All right.
H has been pulled.
Yeah, we agree to all except H.
Right.
So, unless you guys want to discuss it.
Okay. Is there any discussion items, 6A through 6G? All right. Cindy made the motion. Reverend Collins made the motion. Cindy seconded that motion with the amendment. Julie, have it recorded. All right.
So, it has to be a voice vote.
Right. Mr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Green? Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Darby, you still on?
Yes, and yes.
Mr. Hollenshed?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. That motion carries. All right, is there any other public comments? Or we did it all? That was it? Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, being that we have voted on the items, there are no consent agenda items, I would move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Is there a second? Proper move in second, all in favor, by nobody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is now adjourned.